Good evening. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting of the Harkin County Board of Education to order, and if everyone will please stand, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Mr. Bland, do you have our board commitments?
Sure. To improve our effectiveness, the Harkin County Board of Education team commits to keep children first, to listen, be prepared, be professional, demonstrate financial stewardship, represent the entire district, and support district goals, and support board decisions.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone, and thank you all for coming out tonight. It's always good to see a lot of smiling faces out there, and looking forward to being able to recognize a lot of students tonight for all the great things that are going on in our district. And with that, Mr. Wright?
Yes, ma'am. Excuse me, yes, ma'am. I'm gonna admit something, because I've misplaced my orange folder that had everything in it, but fortunately, it's online, so I'm gonna pull that up real quick. So I apologize that orange folder was here, but we'll get through it. Hold on just one moment for me. So, what's recognition? Watch pot never boils, does it? We're gonna do our Better Together Awards first this evening, Ms. Johnson, and so we would like to bring up some students that are being recognized this evening, and they are a group from Ronnieville Elementary School, and they are called the Hillbilly Boys. So, Hillbilly Boys, come on up front. And while we're waiting on them, Madam Chair, I forgot, you need to approve the resolution of recognition first, so. Losing the orange folder got me sideways.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to pass the resolution. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, Ms. Johnson. So these fifth grade boys have been the Ronnieville Elementary School Buildings and Grounds Crew this year. The school has been without a custodian at times this year for various reasons, and they have been assisting with some of those custodial duties. They help set up and clean up after school events, they take out trash with the custodians when they're needed, they pick up trash, they sweep. Ronnieville Principal Stephanie Breeding says they are all very hard workers and are always willing to jump in when needed. There is no doubt this group of young men will be successful in the future because of their willingness to help and their strong work ethic. The first time they helped this year, when Ms. Breeding said, "What do you want to be called?" Or, "Do you have a name for your group?", they strongly came back and they decided on...
Hillbilly.
That's exactly right. So, Mr. Casey, Mr. Bland, these young men have plaques on that big stack there, so if you will present them with a plaque when they come across the stage, and gentlemen, so when you go across the stage, I want you to say your name into the microphone, and I want you to say it loud and proud, all right? Go ahead, guys.
Ryder Maxwell. Kayden French. Gage Myers. Lane Arnett. Tyler Harrison. Colin Reader. Owen Hood.
Guys, when you get done, when Mr. Casey, Mr. Bland give you your plaque, I want you to stand there. Mr. Lovins is directing you, and I want you to stand there so your moms and dads and everyone can take a picture of you. And parents, if you haven't seen, there's a video on our social media about the Ronnieville Hillbilly Boys, so encourage you to go find that and check that out. All right, let's give them a great big hand. Awesome. You guys can exit the stage there. Just go to your left, or your right. No, your right. No, you were going the right way. All right, either way. It's the stuff of legend right there, boys and girls. It's the stuff of legend. Awesome. Okay. David Webb, come on up here, young man. David? You all can give David a hand, too, as he comes to the stage. David is a North Arden High School senior. He and his family are dedicated volunteers at Feeding America of Elizabetown. David has worked many hours there and is certainly considered what is a regular there at the organization. The Webb family has often been at Feeding America at least once a week. David's parents, who are James and Rachel Webb, they've always led their family by example, and David is a leader among his peers. He serves his community and represents his family, his school, and his school district extremely well. We appreciate you, young man. Thank you. Ms. Nola Gier, are you here? Nola, are you here? Come on up. Let's give Nola a hand, too, please. Nola is the cafeteria manager at Lakewood Elementary School. You can go on across, Ms. Nola. She goes above and beyond daily to ensure that her students and staff at Lakewood have healthy options for breakfast and lunch. Ms. Gier provides spa water for staff every day. Spa water. She's always sharing her knowledge with staff members on healthy foods, which allows the staff to make the best possible choices as they go through the food line. During the pandemic and NTI, Ms. Gier made the best of a challenging situation. When vendors could not provide them necessary items to make a meal, she would find ways to make the items they did have in stock appealing. One fellow staff member commented on a survey that Nola and her staff took fish and loaves and made them stretch and feed the entire school. Nola is a team-oriented cafeteria manager who ensures that everyone contributes to the team's success. Her staff is always smiling and helpful. We appreciate you, Ms. Gier. Thank you so much. All right, our next staff award, Madam Chair, is sort of a surprise. Would Command Sergeant Major Charles Robinson please come to the stage? Command Sergeant Major Charles Robinson is one of the original JROTC instructors at John Harden High School. When the building opened for the first time in August of 2001, he will be retiring this year after 22 years of service to John Harden High School and Harden County Schools. Command Sergeant Major Robinson pioneered an award-winning JROTC program over the past 22 years. The John Harden High School JROTC has won numerous drill team awards and multiple state titles in rifle competition, which we'll talk more about later, including the 2023 championship. In addition to providing an award-winning program for students, Sergeant Major Robinson started two traditions that continue today here at John Harden. John Harden hosts the JROTC Military Ball, as well as the annual Veterans Day Ceremony that honors local veterans while teaching all of our students respect for those who have served our country. More importantly, as the outstanding instruction and positive relationships that Sergeant Major Robinson has provided students at John Harden High School for 22 years that deems this honor appropriate. Thank you, sir. We appreciate you. All right, next is Mr. Jerry Cormier. Where are you at, sir? Come on up here. Mr. Cormier has volunteered for years here at the PAC, and he does not like coming on stage, but he has to do so tonight. Mr. Cormier is a true friend of Harkin County Schools and the Harkin County School's Performing Arts Center. He's volunteered, go ahead, Mr. Cormier. They will take you across there. He's volunteered at the PAC for countless performances, community events, and gatherings. He greets each guest with a warm smile and helpful information if requested. He doesn't just give his time, he also shares his treasure with the PAC. His financial contributions have made various performances possible over the PAC's more than 20 years of history. We appreciate you, Mr. Cormier. Thank you for all you do. Our next award recipient, community recipient is Mr. Ed Garth. Coach? The Heartland Elementary Bulldog Basketball Team is here to support Mr. Garth tonight. Mr. Garth has worked with the Heartland Elementary School fifth grade basketball team in the E-Town Spring League. He was respectful, hardworking, and dedicated despite not picking up a win all year. Observers saw much growth in his student skills. His dedication, tenacity, and positivity deserve to be recognized by the Board of Education. Thank you for what you do, Mr. Garth. All right, thank you very much. Mr. Sutton, can you put this outside? For those of you who did not, if you want to speak to the board, I forgot to put this out because it was in my orange folder that I couldn't find. So if you'd like to sign up to speak to the board, you can certainly do that outside if you want to speak to the Board of Education tonight. All right, next is our student recognition, Madam Chair, and we have several of those. So we're gonna bring those groups in, group by group, and they will say their name in the microphone. Judge Bland, or Mr. Bland and Mr. Casey will give them medals, and they will stand for pictures, and then they will exit the stage, and Mr. Lovins will show them how to do that. So first is the All-State Band from Bluegrass Middle School. Don't have any students to recognize. East Arden Middle School, All-State Band. Come on in, East Arden Middle School, All-State Band. Let's give them a hand. Say your name loud and proud.
My name is Agachigunora.
Awesome. Congratulations, young lady. She's a member of the All-State Band from East Arden Middle School. All right, thank you. James T. Alton Middle School, Wyatt. Come on in, Wyatt. Say your name, brother.
Wyatt Camp.
Awesome. Congratulations. All right, thank you, Wyatt. North Middle School, All-State Band. Nobody from North Middle School? Okay. All right, Madam Chair, this is the Kentucky Music Educators Association High School All-State Band, and first is from Central Harden High School. Come on in, Bruins. Say your name into the microphone, loud and proud. Go ahead.
My name is Wyatt Winn.
Good job.
My name is Shiloh Dunaway.
Kaylee Tucker.
Jonathan Devers.
Anna Pierceall.
Kira Sre.
Congratulations, guys. This is the All-State Band from Central Harden. Congratulations. Okay, this is the All-State Band from North Arden High School. Come on up, guys. Come on up. Trojans.
My name is Cano Lillata.
My name is Cadence Ward.
My name is Michael Rowe.
Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen. Madam Chair, this is the John Harden High School Varsity and Junior Varsity JROTC Air Rifle Teams. They earned another state championship. Congratulations, guys. Come on across.
My name is Armin Yun.
My name is Matthew Grubbs.
My name is Jenna Ho.
My name is Caleb Codell.
Ashlyn Shivala Grubbs.
My name is Philip Bischoff.
My name's Taylor Quinn.
My name is Riley Quinn.
My name is Atsiri Camtero.
My name is Madison Moore.
And Madam Chair, I'd be remiss if we didn't recognize also Philip Bischoff, who was the high point shooter for Junior Varsity in the state, and Caleb Codell, who is the high point shooter for Varsity in the state. Congratulations, guys. Awesome. Okay, Kentucky Beta Convention, Central Harden High School. Come on in, guys. These students, all of these students, Madam Chair, at every school, while they're being recognized is in the resolution of recognition, so if anybody wants to see that, they can certainly do that, but the list is thankfully and fortunately lengthy for each school, so that's awesome. So we're just gonna take them across, and they have won various awards for various categories in Beta. Go ahead, guys.
My name is Brianna Blankenship.
My name is Ashley Borders.
I'm Nicole.
My name is Claire Nussbaum.
All right, Central Harden Beta. Great job, guys. John Harden High School Beta. Come on across Bulldogs.
My name's Leanne Canose.
My name is Jeremy Selby.
My name is Lucas Cowan.
All right, congratulations, guys. All right, North Arden High School Beta. This is the, this young lady was brave, she came out by herself tonight. Congratulations. Let's give her a hand.
I'm Anaya Ellis.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Awesome. All right, thank you. All right, Bluegrass Middle School Beta. Come on across, guys. Looks like her sponsor is with them, too.
My name is Amari Jones.
All right, Madam Chair, East Arden High School has a strong tradition of doing very, very well at Beta. We're gonna see why. They have several students, so come on across through here, Bruins.
Rosalyn Thomas.
Jaylee Lyons.
Zoe Fogel.
Emily Hayes.
Kresha Patel.
Aaron Westerfield.
Gracie Rager.
Kate Nussbaum.
Reagan Castor.
Glory Nordike.
Peyton Noice.
Lilia Kimberlane.
Brianna Barner.
Madeline Spalding.
Addison Wiggington.
Peyton Allen.
Avery Daddy.
Amy Langford.
Ashanti Gibbs.
Kyle Evans.
Memphis Delamont.
Jacob Ray.
Jackson Hayes.
Kirsten Williams.
Sayla Nordike.
Presley Abel.
Maggie Stucker.
Eddie May Williams.
Davis Probst.
Carson Williams.
Congratulations, East Arden. And before we lead them off the stage, Mr. Lovins, if you don't know the story behind East Arden, what they did was, they not only raised the funds and did everything to go to Beta, but they also helped a school in eastern Kentucky who was devastated by the floods that had never been to Beta before go to Beta to help them overcome some of the obstacles that they faced this past winter. So we appreciate you guys more than you know. Congratulations, Bruins. Great job. All right, James T. Alton. This is James T. Alton Middle School Beta. You've seen Mr. Camp before.
Wyatt Camp.
All right. Job, Wyatt. All right, North Middle School Beta. Come on through here, young lady.
Kendall Thompson.
Okay, West Arden Middle School Beta. Come on through here, young lady.
Taylor Clemmons.
Congratulations. Okay, Creekside Beta. You guys Creekside? Say your name loud and proud, okay?
Emerson Buckles.
Hannah Martin Canto.
Okay, Heartland Middle School Beta. Come on, guys.
Jonas Garrison.
Aubrey Payne.
Hannah Wagner.
Emma Stinson.
Hadley Heath.
Paxton Lockwood. Agastya Kumar.
Gideon Studer.
Congratulations, Bulldogs. Let's give them a hand, too, please. Heartland, Heartland Beta. Lincoln Trail Beta.
Madeline Nakandala.
Oliver Mitchell.
And last, but certainly not least, Ronnieville Elementary School Beta.
Noel Michael.
All right, Madam Chair, my job is done. Yes, ma'am.
We love getting, being able to recognize all of these great accomplishments and seeing all the good things that are going on and that kids are doing here. And this is just a small sampling of what else is going on across our district, so thank you all very much for coming. Mr. Sutton, are you ready?
How's everybody doing tonight? Well, first of all, I want to give you all a quick update on esports. You all invested in that program for our district. I think you all remember that, Madam Chair, and I just want to give you an update on how that's going. The schools can choose how many different games they want to participate in in terms of, you know, it's like six different games that are approved by the KHSAAF. You get involved in some schools choose two, some three, some six, depending on how many teams you have. And some of those games include Smash Brothers, Madden Football, Splatoon, Rocket League, Mario Kart. I wanted to read you all the, right now, the top 10 esports Madden Football teams in the state. I wanted to read those to you all tonight, close to the end of the season. In 10th place right now, Beechwood High School. 9th place, Franklin Simpson High School. 8th place, one of the Hart County teams. 6th place, St. X High School. 5th place, East Jesmen High School. 4th place, another Hart County school. They have multiple teams, obviously. 3rd place, Belfry High School. 2nd place, Great Crossings High School out of Lexington, and currently the number one ranked Madden Football esports team in the state, Central Harden High School. So just wanted you all to be aware that your investment...
I hope you were going somewhere good with that.
Where did our crowd go? They missed it. Okay, okay. Y'all start the wave, if you can. Now, Mr. Menendez, I want me to share that with you. First of all, thank you all for investing. Also, when I was here at John Harden the other day, Mr. Bevel stopped me and said, "By the way, in Splatoon, we beat Central Harden the other day." He wanted me to know that. So it's already becoming competitive. Our teams are showing out well, they have the materials they need, and the kids are enjoying it. I think it's only gonna grow. You can have multiple teams for multiple events, and thank you all for investing in our kids. I want to say thank you for that, and I'll try to keep you updated, so.
Thank you.
Tonight, I want to talk to you about PBL, a little bit, Project-Based Learning. I wanted to start using five words, and I hope I get these right. Brandy's gonna correct me if I don't, but a lot of our teacher training, our student training has been around five learning outcomes: knowledge and thinking, collaboration, oral communication, written communication, and agency. And we've been providing training. Brandy has been one of our guiding lights as our Director of Innovation on leading this training, working with the New Tech Summit, and getting our teachers and our students involved. They're gonna be presenting us tonight to kind of where we're at in this process and kind of show you some of the things we're doing in the classroom. So Brandy, I think you've got some students here with you tonight. I'm gonna turn it over to you, if that's okay.
I'll first kind of go quickly through. It is also my evening to kind of tell you all what I do as Director of Innovation, so I'll get through that part really quick, though, and then you can talk to the kids, because that's who we all want to talk to. I came out of our Instructional Technology Department and used to do that work, so I still get to kind of support instructional technology in what I do in the district, one of those being STLP, or the Student Technology Leadership Project. We saw them last year at the board meeting in, I think, February or March, for those of you who are with us there. We have just slightly more teams going to state for STLP this year than we did last year, so that's good news. I also get to work with some of our community partnerships in lots of events, and special events at school, and evening events with parents, and I get to work with the Kentucky Department of Education has an ILN, which is an Innovative Learning Network, and so I get to take part in that once a month or so, and then a couple times in the year where we get together as a state and see what other people are doing, tell them what we're up to, and share our success and what we're doing for our kids, but then also we get to borrow those ideas and hear about those successes and things from other districts. As far as, and I have slides, I don't know if they're there, if you all want to look, but some of the money part, because I know we like to toggle that part, we have a $750,000 grant that we're here in year two of. It's from the Department of Defense Education Association, and that actually is running in four... Association. And that actually is running in four of our schools in the north end that have a lot of military-connected students. That's, wow, I'm blanking. Meadowview, Woodland, JTA, and North Middle. That's specifically about engaging children in STEM. And so, we've done a lot of instructional support and coaching with teachers there. But we're also able through this grant to provide supplies, camps, like STEM camps this summer, and family nights, which we've had some real success with. I also get to help support our teachers with a deeper learning grant that comes from the state co-ops. It's $160,000 over the next few years. And what we have done is, the Kentucky Department of Education has, if you've heard Dr. Glass talk about United We Learn, and it's a long process they've been going through for the past few years, thinking about coming out of COVID and what's, where's education going? Also, you know, with all the industry and things that we have coming into the state. So, his goal, our goals are to provide vibrant, sorry, vibrant experiences for every student, encourage innovation in schools, and collaborate with our communities. And we always know, we all know those three things are super important. So, our work under that has been a lot of, we've done some STEM work in elementary school with Discovery Education. And then, as Mr. Sutton recognized, 6th through 12th grade, we've started problem and project-based learning, and doing a lot of instruction. We started Bluegrass last year with the 6th grade team. There have more teachers coming on this year. And then, the, all of our middle and high schools, two and a half years from now, we hope to have all teachers exposed to some sort of training on that instructional model. We feel like it's important because of those five outcomes for our kids that Mr. Sutton just talked about. So, instead of me continuing to tell you that this is great for the kids, and we know this is what our community wants, we know this is what workforce is telling us, you know, we know this is what parents and kids are telling us, they want these experiences. And if we can provide opportunities during the school day for kids to orally communicate, and communicate written, and to look at their own agency and responsibility for their learning, and then work together and collaborate in groups, you add that to that content knowledge and thinking, which is what we've always done, right? You know, then we really get something magical. So, I want some students to share a project with you. They are from Ms., come on over ladies. They are from Ms. Gibson's Biology Class at Central Harden. And they're gonna actually show you what was the culminating product. They won. They went in front of a group of judges, came and looked at these websites, and there's actually one, and it's being shown in the school cafeteria, right? Or the kids at the school have access to it? Yes. So, come on up. And they're gonna show you their project, and then talk a little bit about why they liked learning like this. And then, Ms. Gibson will talk to us as well.
Okay, so this project was mainly to inform not just Central Harden students, but just Harden County students in general about general nutrition and the foods you put in our body, and how those choices you make now will affect you for the rest of your life. So, proteins and enzymes. This slide basically tells you about how proteins help prepare and build your body tissues and coordinate bodily functions. Too many can cause elevated blood lipids and can lead to heart disease. But, not having enough can lower muscle mass and also slows your metabolism. Enzymes help you speed up metabolism, and they help build and break down different substances. Having too many can cause liver damage and inflammation, and when you don't have enough, they can't break down certain foods and absorb nutrients. It also shows fun facts for students to read that could possibly encourage them to eat more.
Okay. So, I would be covering what are carbohydrates. While many might know them as carbs, you might be sitting here asking, "What are carbs?" So, in simple term, carbohydrates/ carbs are the body's most important available source of energy. They are a necessary part for both a healthy diet for both kids and adults. The two main forms of carbs are simple carbohydrates or simple sugars, including fructose, glucose, and lactose. Carbohydrates give you energy, which helps your body function. Severe carb limits can cause your body to break down fat into ketones, which is called ketosis. Ketosis can cause side effects such as bad breath, headache, and weakness. If you have too much carbs, it can lead to weight gain and increased risk of heart disease.
This slide is about lipids. And lipids are fatty acids that help your body do all sorts of things. They store energy, protect cells, and repel water. They are basically a chemical messenger. Lipids are in butter, olive oil, beeswax, and meat. Not all of the meat, but just the fat pieces that rarely get eaten. So, nucleic acids, our common name is DNA and RNA. They are for storing and transmitting information, and nucleic acids are in all living things. They help your immune system, plus help with muscle recovery. You can find nucleic acids in foods such as meat, seafood, and mushrooms. If you have too much, it can lead to cancer and other autoimmune diseases. You don't get other living things' DNA by eating these foods. The last slide is for nutrition advice. It includes athletes, if you need help with concentration, or if you struggle with tiredness. Because athletes, they need a lot of energy. So, this just provides information about the foods that will give you energy, and those are lean meat, dairy products, beans, nuts, and soy products. And it shows what you should avoid, like white breads, baked goods, sodas, energy drinks, and candy. The concentration side basically explains how if we zone out, fall asleep, or pay attention, it can be surrounded by our diet. Like, you can eat eggs, leafy green vegetables, you can drink green tea and coffee to help. Tiredness can be caused by what you eat at lunch, or what you eat prior to what you do in your day. To avoid being tired, you have to eat things like unprocessed foods, fruits and vegetables, lean proteins, whole grains, water, and nuts. And foods that might make you tired during the day are like baked goods and white bread and sugary foods.
And they worked in a group, these three ladies, and then one other. If you would like to share just a little bit on a personal note about what you enjoyed or what you learned from working in a group on this project, I think Kennedy, we were gonna do you first? And I didn't set a very good example for public speaking. You can touch that.
So, what I learned about working in a group is that, because like in the real world, you would need to work in a group to get things done. You can't just work on your own. And it teaches you how to communicate with others, because some people have difficulty with like communicating with people. So, it teaches you how to talk to people and how to work in a group, which helps you in the real world. Yeah.
And to add on about what was Kennedy saying, I learned that this project really helped me get outside of my comfort zone by engaging with new people that I probably would never have talked to, and then learning to work with them, because I feel like we're different people, but we actually have a lot more in common than we feel, so. Going along with what both of them said, I thought it was interesting to see everybody's points of view on how, just how everything worked, and how everything that we put together in the project, we got multiple different inputs on it, and it just all came together in the end.
Hi, I'm Ms. Gibson. These are my students. I'm so proud of them. I just wanted to say that from an instructional point of view, these New Tech strategies we've been learning, let me set them up for this, this professional-looking website. I've always, I teach science, I've always done projects, but I don't think that until New Tech came along, I really understood how to facilitate true collaboration. I feel like before, it was just kind of divide and conquer, and you know, you could do your part, and I could do my part. I've really learned how to set them up for having those conversations and really creating together. And I'm so proud, because not just this group, I've seen so many students in so many groups come out of their shells, because they now have a structure to follow for communicating. They're not quite so out there on a limb. They can practice those skills without feeling like everybody's staring, or like they're gonna fail, or somebody's gonna laugh at them. They have a way to do it now. And that's just kind of changed entirely how we do projects. We're getting so much more out of it, I think, in class, not just the biology, which they have gone really deep into, but also those, those real-world skills as well. I think it's just been a really cool thing. I'm excited to see where it goes as we get deeper and deeper into this training. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, please. Yeah, and thanks to their parents for bringing them out, so, to help us look good tonight, too. Yeah, so we just kind of wanted to give you a student perspective. And when we hear the terms PBL, or PBRL, or you hear about New Tech, and the work that we're doing 6th through 12th grade, just so you could really kind of get a concrete look at this is what it is, and this is what we're talking about. Like I said, we've trained about 150 teachers are implementing at this point. We have about 250 more, maybe even 300, this summer. And then, next summer will be our final year of working with a partner with New Tech in order to train teachers, and that will finish out all of our high schools. At the same time, we're working on our strategies for when they're gone, how do we do this? Right? How do we build enough teacher leaders like Ms. Gibson that are comfortable and helping us to run professional development, and to train new staff as they come in, and to help us get better as we go on. We have some structures set up in ISD. Mr. Sutton provides the structural support, I think. He's the person that knows how to map it out long-term for us. And so, next year, we have a plan for our teachers. One of the really cool things is, Ms. Gibson teaches, is the only biology teacher at Central. Or, actually, she may not be. There may be more than one. Is there two, just two? Yeah. Okay. Some schools, a teacher's the only person that teaches what they do in the high school, or there may only be one 6th grade social studies teacher out of school. But since we have all 10 of our middle and high schools that are doing this work, we truly get to be stronger together and work together. So, on our PL days, when the teachers are having work time that have started this, they come together, and the biology teachers at North, Central, and John get to plan something together. And then they try it, and then they come back and reflect on what worked and what didn't, and then they're gonna plan another one. And then, and so that's kind of gonna be our running structure as we go forward. The teacher collaboration, and them being very excited about not being siloed off and working by themselves, and just how much stronger even the adults are when they're working together, has been something that immediately emerged with this. So, we're really excited about that. And some of the, you know, the structures that we have going forward. You, if you would like, if you have not seen it in action, there is a showcase day, and I know this is probably not enough time, but April 3rd at Bluegrass, and I can get you information if you would like to attend that day. But it's during the school day. Some different districts in the area are gonna be coming to check out Bluegrass that day, since they're in their second year, and have more people that are working towards these goals. And then, I would also just like to say that this is a huge mindset shift for our administrators and our teachers. So, if you have a chance to thank any of them, like I said, all of our middle and high school principals are involved in this work now, including College View and EC3. Just if you see them and get their feedback on this, know that this is, it's a lot to wrap their brains around and to make some of these shifts, and think about, we're going to educate the whole child during the day, and shoot for some of those other outcomes. Not only the content knowledge and thinking, but the other things as well. And the teachers as well are putting in a lot of, a lot of work on this. Seeing the dividends, seeing the returns. But they've just done a phenomenal job. I'm incredibly proud of how hard our teachers and our administrators have worked toward this, so. I guess that's it. Yes? Thank you.
Thank you. It's, it's exciting to see all this being put into motion, and it seems like it is really catching on, and that the kids are really responding to it, which is, I'm sure, a big part of what makes it work so well. All right. John, do we have any visitors? Construction updates. We got some updates from our construction manager and our architect today on Central Harden progress, and it's still on track, which is always a good thing to hear. There's a lot going on there. Starting to get some inside work done, starting to get some painting going on, which is always exciting. But still a lot more to do. And if you drive by there, I'm sure you can see something new occurring every day. So, but it sounds like everything is working well, and that things are moving along the way that they need to. So, one of these days, we're gonna get to see a wonderful outcome from all of the construction that's going on. Anything else anybody wants to add to that? All right. Our consent agenda. We are approving for 11 Central Harden High School students to graduate early, effective May 17th. We are approving an amendment to the 2022-2023 school calendar. Essentially, we have some bank days that we can use, where we have had three days that we have missed. And we are going to use those days so that we will still finish up, I think it's on the 25th, May 25th. So that we can keep everything on track before not having to go into that next week. We're also approving graduation dates for the 22-23 school year, which will be Central Harden, May 25th. John Harden, May 26th in the evening, and North Harden, May 27th in the, in the morning.
Yes. And Ms. Johnson, if I may say, we intend to have Central Harden's graduation as we did last year at Broadband Arena. However, we have to wait for that contract to be finalized. So, there's a lot of moving parts to that, but we promise you, as soon as we know the exact location, we will be sharing that with the graduates this year, as well as their parents.
And hopefully, that's the last year that we'll have to, have to work with that. But it worked pretty well last year, and I think that everybody, that that turned out really well. Okay, we are approving Central Harden High School educators' Rising Chapter to travel to Orlando, Florida via commercial carrier, and EC3 culinary team to travel to Washington, DC via commercial carrier. They won a state competition again and qualified to go there, so that's exciting for them. We receive financial reports. We are approving a $1,000 contribution for project graduation at Central Harden, John Harden, and North Harden. Approving the Process Commodity Bid for Child Nutrition. Approving BG 2 and 3, and Revised BG 1 for the Child Nutrition Project. Approving some change orders for the Central Harden High School renovation Phase 1. And we are approving a BG 1 for the Central Harden High School site acquisition out in front of the school, and then a BG 1 for the Central Harden High School Phase 2 renovation. Lot of renovation going on there, and we had to break that up into, into some phases. Approving the BG 4s for East Harden Middle School project. I think we're getting close to getting that one wrapped up. So, that will be some good news. Approval of a five-year contract with HW Dukes for all middle and high school athletic supplies. We received some information about the Central Harden soccer field remediation, and received information about fundraising opportunity through German American Bank and Abound Credit Union. Got certified in classified personnel actions, and then minutes from everyone. Is there anything in there that anybody wants to discuss further, or pull out, anything?
I approve the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. Don't think we have any action items. Anyone? Anyone with any new business? That takes us to the superintendent's report.
So, last night, we had a meeting for all of our teacher rise- So last night, we had a meeting for all of our teacher rise students at John Harden High School. All three high schools, Central Harden, John Harden, and North Harden, participated in last night's events. I believe we had around 40 students to come out, ranging from 9th grade to our seniors in high school who have an interest in becoming teachers to join the excellent faculty and staff of Harden County Schools. Some of these students already have an associate's degree, so they will go in as juniors in college when they leave high school. And then some of these students are on the normal path of a four-year degree when they leave us. But what Harden County has committed to is they will pay one-third of the tuition of these students. And Western Kentucky University has committed to also contributing one-third. If a student chooses to go into education, but they are at a different college or university, then we will match the amount that Western Kentucky University charges us because they have a really great rate. And that way, we can expand those possibilities to multiple students. Just want to share that the future is definitely bright in Harden County Schools with the students that we saw last night. I think Mr. Sutton and Mr. Wright were incredibly impressed with those individuals in the audience. Many said they've wanted to be teachers their entire lives. They weren't sure how to make that work. So the opportunity that the board has provided to them will definitely pay it forward to us. While other districts will possibly struggle in future years, we can see that we are going to have excellent teachers joining our mentors that we will have in our schools at that time. So just wanted to thank the board for that. And if you would like to read more about that, you can go to the Harden County Schools website and look under the news. And you will be able to read about that and have additional information if you're interested in that and how to follow up if you're interested in joining the teaching profession. So again, thanks to the board for making that possible. I think we will reap a lot of rewards from that action that you all have taken.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited about this program and see what it, what it leads to going forward. I think it's going to be great things. We do not need an executive session. Board calendar, April 10th through the 14th is spring break. Hard to believe we're already there. April 13th through the 14th is KEA and offices will be closed. April 20th will be our next board meeting. The noon meeting will be held at East Harden Middle School and our regular meeting will be at Central Office. And with that, do I have a motion?
Move we adjourn.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.